Thanks, Mike. Sounds good. So we have a quorum. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. So this is the Monday, March 11th, meeting of the Mopilier Planning Commission. First thing we have to do is approve the agenda. So if I could have a planning commissioner move to approve the agenda, that would be great. It looks like Ari Aranda is raising her hand to.
I will approve the agenda.
And if you keep yourselves, yeah, let me go through. I can. I'll hit ask to unmute. There you go, Carlton. And if you leave yourself unmuted, I think you're okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Ari on. Do we have a second, Carlton?
Yes, you got it.
Okay, second to approve the agenda. Those in favor of approving the agenda say aye. Aye, or wave your hand if you're muted.
Aye.
All right. Agenda approved. So next we have comments from the chair. I hadn't thought about it, but I guess I have things to say. For one thing, in case you weren't there at the last city council meeting, we'll be going over some feedback from the city council and then we'll be taking a vote on making some changes to the proposals to the changes in zoning. It was fantastic. It went really well. We were concerned. But the public really showed up and had our backs a lot in what we're trying to do. And the city council responded to that. So it went better than we could have imagined. So hooray. And I guess with that, I should say that since we're, since we're at such a high note right now, and since I've been getting pressure to move off the planning commission, that I might plan to make next pressure from my work. That is not from anybody here. So anyways, so I'm thinking maybe the next meeting will be the final one. And then so we plan, maybe you can plan to elect new chair at the first meeting in April. That's it for me for comments. Does anybody else have anything?
I will just mention real quick, as you can see, I'm working from home today, and it is very, very windy. And I know some people have lost power. So obviously, if the power goes out, we might get disconnected and I will go through and fire up my generator and get us back on because we have to have a vote tonight. So hopefully we have a quick meeting, we get a quick vote and we make a decision, we can move on. But if not, I'll fire the generator and I'll get us back online. So just be patient for about 10 minutes and I'll try to get you guys all back on. So just a quick, quick warning because we do need, we do need to have a vote to approve the changes and approve the revised required report. So.
That's great, Mike. Thanks for bringing that up. So nobody give up if we, if we drop. Michael will just be back with us shortly. Okay, so that's it for comments. Does anybody else have anything before we move on? All right. So the next thing on the agenda is comments from the public. So if there's anyone here from the public who would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda, that is, that's not related to the proposed zoning changes. Now would be the time to speak up and it looks like we have one person on Zoom that's not a planning commissioner or staff. So now would be the time to use the raise hand function or wave to us or, or whatever. If you want to talk about something that's not on the agenda. All right. I will move on then. So review of the council public hearing and the zoning amendments. Mike has prepared some documents for us and I can only presume that he is going to walk through it with us. So with that, Mike, I'll hand it off and you can go for it.
All right. So I think you guys should have this document. Out of my way. Let's see if I can make it a little bit bigger here for us. So these were all the changes that just move it over for my screen benefit a little bit. These were all the changes at the start, and I sent this out to you. It should be attached to the council packet that you guys all reviewed when this was a planning commission, public hearing, all these ones through here. And these were some decisions. In fact, 3009 on fixing stormwater rules, we said save for future. We actually ended up adding some back in at the last minute. And so the gray ones are things we didn't do. And then we got down to new additions for the council to consider. So you've already proved everything above that line. This first section were changes that I'm not sure. The first three you guys may have seen, but came in after the public hearing was warned. So we had a word just, that was a technical error that had to get fixed. And I'll just run through these really quick because there's not too many of them. With the density requirement, we had to add in the capital complex. We had a conversation about our proposal is if you're in the design review district, you're exempt from density. After we made that motion and we approved that and it went to city council, we recognized that there's actually an exclusion zone to the designate, to the design review district, and that exclusion is the capital complex. So basically the density, the way we wrote it, density would be exempt everywhere except for the capital complex. This just added capital complex back in. So if you're in the capital complex, you'd be exempt from density as well. And we also expanded commencement of development rules to include open permits. So what this exemption did was added in an extra year. So anyone who has an existing open permit, you're going to get one extra year to use your permit. And the reason why is we approved these permits during COVID and then during a flood. So there are a number of projects that didn't happen, but developers wanted to move forward on. They already got all their permits, but they didn't actually get to move forward because they got stopped by COVID and flooding. And so we put in a recommendation to extend those open permits, one additional year, and then they'll follow our new rules on development permits. So hopefully that makes sense. It's just giving everybody an extra year on their permits. If you have an open permit. Then these other ones were added in based on comments from the public. So there was a comment that and a gentleman reviewed the entire document and he found a bunch of stuff that were very good. So first, we have an exemption at the start of our zoning that goes through these, everything needs a permit. And then we go through and say, these things don't need a permit. And one of them was if you get it, if you have TV dishes or other antennas and they're less than 15 square feet, they don't need a permit. He pointed out nowadays, most of these dishes are actually closer to two and three square feet. So a 15 square foot dish is kind of, you know, so 2002. So we really couldn't lower that now. And so the council agreed and we lowered that to 3.25. We noticed a few things. We had missed a few residential 24,000s. Remember that district was eliminated as a result of the home act. So we are now, we had to, we removed it from most of the document, but we missed a couple. One was in the applicability for one of the planned unit developments. It was still in the legend for figure three dash 11. And it was still in the use table, which we ended up reusing for urban residential. He noted that there was a technical piece. It just, just had a header that said Heinstein height. But it didn't have anything there. And I actually ended up moving a few things around, changed the reference that was in 312E to move it back to the, to move it back to 312E. So that's not really a change. The recommendation to improve the definition of top of bank, which we took his recommendation. It was out of state statute. So there is a new top of bank definition. There was a recommendation, remember, we talked about making country club road, the zoning map that we said it should be urban center one. It's the most flexible zoning district. It was pointed out by him and a number of other people that, well, the purpose statement for urban center one doesn't work and a lot of the other pieces don't work. They recommended creating a new zoning district called urban residential. We said, okay. So we drafted new rules for urban residential. It is a new zoning district. And use that. And actually, we put that in that area where on the use table where or residential 24,000 used to be, we put urban residential and we put in a whole bunch of districts that we thought would be appropriate. We added urban residential to the parking exempt areas. So there's no parking requirement up there. We added it to the light zones. So now it's got some light rules. We added urban residential to outdoor seating and urban outdoor display rules. Just that way it's got rules in effect. We made further revisions to the demolition to account for redevelopment projects. That's a same person made a comment that our rules were kind of focused on if you demolish something and return it to grade. But there's also a whole set of projects where you're demolishing and building on that same location. And so we adjusted the rules, made them better. It was a good set of comments, good recommendations he made. It's better product now. That was another set of changes you guys didn't see, and we can go through in detail any of these you want, but most of them aren't really making substantial changes, except maybe country club road. Country Club Road is what kicked us into requiring the planning commission to review. That was a substantial change. All these other ones I would have recommended to council. These aren't substantial changes. That was a substantial change. They then had a second public hearing on February 28th and okay. I'll let you jump in, Kirby. Can you unmute or I have to unmute you again? All right.
Yeah, I didn't realize that was going to happen. So yeah, Mike, what, just for the, for the planning commission, for whoever might be watching from the public. Can you give us just a summary of what the country club zone is going to look like?
Trying to remember if I'm going to be able to pull that draft up. So the area is still the same, except down here. Let me take off the 28th changes first, and then I'll go back to talk about those specifically. And if I have to, I'll just open it, open up the, the document itself and kind of grab a few pieces. So we amended on the 28th, the council amended a few uses on the table. Another kind of significant change we had always talked about for density. If, if you have a single family home, if you have a conforming lot, you can have a duplex, even if you don't have the density requirement. So if you're in residential 6,000 and you have a 6,500 square foot lot, you can have a duplex, even though you'd normally need 12,000 square feet, you don't because we ignore the density. If you have a conforming lot and you can have a duplex, that's today's rules. Now, we of course have talked about making that for units. That's in our proposal. If you have a conforming lot, you can have four units. What the council said on the 28th is get rid of the conforming requirement. If you have a parcel, you can have up to not four, but six units. So that's actually two changes. That's what you see here on these 28th changes. One removes conforming and adds four to six. So regardless, you still have to meet all the other requirements, parking and everything else. But if, if parking is required for that area, but you, we don't look at density for anything up to six units. So that was their proposal they put on. That's one of the things you'll be voting on to say, yes, that's fine. DPW added some revisions to stormwater rules. That's what I had mentioned above. We added some waiver requirements for signs. That was a request that had been made. Somebody had some questions on signs. They wanted to put up a sign that'd be slightly taller than the requirement. And I said, well, we, we could have sign requirements. So that was what we did. They added back the solar shading. Remember, we talked about eliminating the solar shading requirement entirely. They added it back, but only back to basically the 2021 requirement, which was we had proposed only protecting existing and permitted solar devices. So you can't shade an existing solar device, existing solar panel or hot water, solar. And that analysis is now from equinox to equinox, from March to September 20th. So as opposed to December 21st, it's now the middle and now it's only the existing and existing and permitted. So that's the new analysis that's in there. Updated table of contents. So that was the other piece. All right. So I can jump off, the quick summary of urban residential. It allows the same height as urban center one. So it's 60 feet. That's five to six stories, depending on how you're doing your stories. It is does not have a density requirement, does not have a parking requirement. It is pretty flexible. I think I put setbacks at about 10 feet. So they matched more urban center two because it didn't sound like we were looking at going for that downtown block style urban development where buildings touch buildings. Boom, 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 boom. We're probably talking about separate buildings, but usually you put about a 10 foot side setback. That's what you see for, think about Main Street from the library to the roundabout. You got big bulky buildings. In this case, there'll be even bigger buildings than what you see there. But you have individual buildings as opposed to buildings touching one another. So that's kind of the difference. So, and you wouldn't want them closer than 10 feet. I mean, buildings five feet apart are kind of making little alleyways between buildings. I don't think that's what we're looking for. If you're going to have five story building, you probably want at least 20 feet between the buildings, each building 10 feet from the property line. So that was a little bit of a sense on the setbacks. So we still have really big, most of the uses are permitted. We did allow things like recreation hotels. And the, the reason for that is not because we're trying to, to have those things happen, but because we are, we really could have called this urban mixed use as opposed to urban residential, maybe be a little tiki-tacky with the semantics of the names. But the idea is we didn't want to just have this residential enclave out at Country Club Road. We were trying to think also half of the lower area is owned, well, it's all owned by the city. Half of it, we plan to develop for residential, half of it's going to be residential. So that is going to be recreational. So the recreational piece may have other uses and we may have some other uses that kind of mix in on the first floor of some of these residential buildings. So some of the examples I used at the planning commission, at the council meeting was we could have a restaurant or a small grocery store or you know, maybe we have a senior facility, a senior facility that goes in there and we want to have a physical therapy place or something like that. You want to allow some of these uses to be there. Well, you don't want to have our car washes and gas stations and those types of uses, but you do want to allow a number of uses and own the property. So we have a lot of control, not only from this angle, but from the other angle. So we'll have zoning and we'll have the ability to, who we approve the projects to. So that's a little bit of the background.
Would you, would you say overall that, that urban center two is the best comparison for an existing district?
I don't know if we're going to end up really having anything that looks like this. I think we
I just, I just meant based on the uses, like based on, based on the types of, the types of uses happening that we would expect. Maybe it was, yeah, I imagine it's going to look, sounds more like a campus type style that you're describing.
Yeah, it's going to kind of have that, that look to it. I think some of it, there was a little bit of, you know, chicken and egg as to, do we get the developer into find out how they would like to do it and then tailor the zoning to that, which has, you know, isn't good planning, but does kind of makes good sense logically that, you know, we kind of want to see where, how a developer wants to go. A lot of communities, if you're in Florida, they would just go through and kind of open things up in some places in Florida and you would come in and they would propose the the form-based code. They would say, hey, we're going to do a development, reuse form-based code. This is what it's going to look like. These are going to be the rules we're going to develop by. And basically the community agrees to the, to the code. And then it gets developed and built. And you know, if you're in Arizona and Texas and Florida, North Carolina, you'll get a lot of those. And we're kind of sitting here figuring out, well, we'll put some zoning in that generally looks back at the process that was used to develop the Country Club Road. We're not making this up. There was a public process, community came together. They said, we don't want single family homes. We don't want this. We don't want that, but we do want this, you know? The developer consultant asked, how big do you guys want? Five story buildings? And they said, yes, five story buildings in the lower area. It's perfectly fine. So we're not just making this up. This is stuff that the public has had a process on and said, yes, we're okay with this. But five story buildings could look like Essex Town Center or it could look like Burlington, South Burlington's Newtown Center. So you've got two completely different ways that, you know, the same idea could look. And sometimes you have to put some pictures out and let the public say, yeah, we like, we like A better than B. And some of that has to come down to letting some developers come in and say, this is what would actually work in this location. We, we kind of need both, both hands shaking on this one to make it work. So we're going to put something out. We're going to see how it goes. We're going to see what we get from the public when we do that process. And if we need to amend the zoning, we'll amend the zoning. But for now, it's, it's opened up for a number of uses. It's pretty flexible, but it doesn't allow everything. It's not unlimited.
Thanks, Mike. Was, is that the extent of the changes coming back to us?
Those are the changes. So some of the substantial pieces that you kind of have to go through and say, yep, we heard it and we support these changes. And, and basically what the, the return to you guys is if there's a substantial change, you're supposed to look at it in light of the, the city plan, the master plan and go through and say, yeah, this is still consistent with the master plan. And most of these changes we based on, and that's in that required report that we can go over really hung our hat on the fact that we wanted to promote housing. We, a lot of this is based on the housing chapter. We need to promote housing. And so the removing of the conforming requirement, basically saying that non, not pro, the prohibition, removal of the prohibition of non-conforming to have that benefit. The increase of four to six is just increasing housing. And a number of these other pieces are really all about those types of, of changes. So the substantial changes is, is adding back the solar shading requirement. We do have energy policies that would still support the energy policies. But it's now been adjusted and even MEAC, the Energy Committee, reviewed the rules and said that the rules we have in place are ridiculous. We need to amend the rules and they felt these rules were okay. They, they thought these, these would be the rules. They, they didn't want to eliminate all of them. They would be comfortable at least protecting the ones that we have, the solar devices that we have. Cause if somebody were to put $30, $35,000 into some solar devices to have their neighbor then build a project that shades it would be problematic. So I don't think there's going to be a lot of it.
Yeah, we can, we can stop there. And so we may as well like, you know, have some structure to how we discuss it. So let's, let's stay there for a second and discuss the solar shading. My two cents is that this is, this is reasonable, that this is probably not going to prohibit other things that we, that we, other goals we have for the city and it's a reasonable landing place. Remember, we were coming from basically letting imaginary solar projects stop development and that, that's going to be no longer the case. But does anybody else have anything to comment about the solar recommendation? Go ahead, Aaron. I think you might need to be unmuted, Mike.
Thanks. I'm, I'm sorry. I just, I forgot when we were going into the going into these latest found the recommendations, where was the solar shading? What, what was on the books before this? And I, and then let me just say this is like, I, I'm not an expert in this, but these sort of, I'll call it sort of half baked approaches to what you can and can't do with respect to solar shading. It gives me a little bit of heartburn from a kind of litigation risk perspective. I don't know if we've had the town's attorney take a look at this and has given an opinion on it. And again, I'm not an expert on it, but I, I'm I, I, this does give me some pause in terms of just kind of throwing out ideas about what folks can and can't do in terms of development based on existing solar facilities that may sit on roofs. I don't know what the answer to it is. I haven't looked at any of it, but I, I'm just curious if, A, what we had on the books before, because I don't sort of inform what we've been comfortable with before and B, whether or not we've had the town's attorney take a look at it. So I think if we haven't, we might want to do that here. Cause once I just, my, my understanding is just from way back in law school is once you get into these sort of rights with, you know, light and air and all that, it gets, it can get very complicated very quickly. And I just wouldn't want to put the town in a position where we're setting ourselves up for a problem that might come down the road.
Yeah, I'm going to comment, then I'll let Mike go into more explanation, but I'm right there with you about that. Do you, do you recall like, this is the same battle we fought last year where the, the solar shading applied to any potential solar development. So basically anywhere. And so it's dialed way, way back. The litigation risk of what it, of the current, of the, of the current state is crazy high, like you're saying. So in this case, it's dialed back to just an existing device at least, or at least, or, or one that's about to be installed.
As I was saying, that, that's kind of what my memory was with that is that we were full bore, but I just, I never knew whether or not we've had the town attorney take a look at that. And this just seems like something that if we want to encourage development, and especially if we start getting into multi-story development, given the, the amount of hills and trees and whatnot. And that, that was sort of, I think the issue that was sort of problematic with this to begin with is that so much of the shading that exists, you know, is due to trees and just the topography is my understanding. I don't, you know, it, those things aren't going to go away and to sort of, this, this to me seems somewhat arbitrary. But again, I don't, I don't know the answer to it because I haven't run the legal traps on it by any means, but it's just something that I wanted to raise here. It ju- it just seems gray at best from my perspective.
Yeah, so to kind of roll back, you had a couple of questions in there all at once. So the question of where where we are right now. So in our current zoning regulations, the rules are that you cannot shade roofs, walls, or yards. And by definition, yards in the zoning means areas within the setback area. So it really kind of shading anything on somebody else's yard. And it can't shade on December twenty-first, which leaves the longest shadow between nine and three. So it's really early in the morning to really late in the afternoon on the, and it can't have any impact. So even you know, twenty minutes of hitting your neighbor's yard um, at nine thirty-five in the morning on December twenty-first. Um, that wouldn't be allowed. You prohibit the development of a building. So we all know that's ridiculous, but that's what the rules say. There is a certain exemption in there. There is a model that says if you don't cast a shadow bigger than fifteen feet on a fence at the property line or something like that. So technically it would, you are allowed to have a certain amount of shading that would happen within that diagram and within that model. It was a, it's a something that the consultant had put together. So anyways, that's the rule in place now. We have proposed to City Council to eliminate it altogether. What council has said is, let's take a step back in, let's protect at least the existing devices. Let's adjust it from March to September as the analysis. And I also forgot to mention, let's adjust that from only ten to two. So if you start thinking about where the sun is from ten to two in those windows, you're looking at of, you know, a much more, as opposed to the sun, you know, at on December is coming across at this really low angle at nine o'clock in the morning. Um, now it's ten o'clock in the morning and it's at the equinox. So you're talking about a much less likely that that shade is going to be causing an issue. And it is looking at mostly those rooftop things. So you'd have to be pretty high up to have that impact at that time. So I think we're just going to have to watch how this plays out over time and see how it, see how the impact is. But it should have a much less of an impact that that equinox line makes a big difference from the solstice. So and ten o'clock is going to be a big difference from nine o'clock. So both of those factors should make a big difference.
Yeah, I understand that. And I I remember, you know, John Adams in particular was pretty good at outlining why we should move away from it, which I think sort of underpinned why we made the recommendation to get rid of it altogether. And I I still think that's probably the right thing to do. I I'm just saying it from a from a different perspective, not in terms of what's the, you know, what's the methodology that's used to establish, you know, shading? I I'm just saying, I, I don't know if there's even a legal basis for us to and if we just don't, and if we just don't know, I just am suggesting that it might be something that might be worth taking to the town uh, attorney very quickly to see if they've got a quick and dirty opinion on it. Uh, before, you know, when we go back to, because we'll make our vote and then it goes back for another hearing at City Council, right?
Yep, on Wednesday.
So, so I Yeah, I just, to me, I think you're right. If we adopt this sort of compromise position, given the equinox versus the solstice modeling, it's not, it's a low-risk situation anyway, but I wonder that if even, why invite the fight if we, if we're legal, legally shaky grounds to justify it in the first place. That that's just my concern, but if it's you know, if if this group and ultimately City Council feels like it's such a low-risk situation, it's not worth getting an opinion on it. That's fine, but I'm, you know, just my Yeah, I'm still hesitant about it, that's all.
Yeah, I can, I can check, I can check real quick to see if we could get David Ruda opine on it. Um, but getting to your third point, just so I was just going to finish up. So on the third point, we did bring that up with council. It's the theory of ancient lights and really, uh, what I'd mentioned to them and and uh, that had been pointed out to me was that it is really a kind of a false thing. It had been something litigated many times, uh, especially during New York City with the construction of skyscrapers. And people would loo- be losing their their, they formerly had sunlight, now they don't. And the theory of ancient lights is basically that property owners do not own the light that crosses onto their land. It's not that, you know, the, if you formally had light onto your land and somebody builds a building and now shades your land, that's you, that's not one of the rights in your bundle of sticks that you have as a property owner. And that's, that's a theory.
Yeah, as I say, that that's been sort of rings a bell in my, the back of my mind from a long time ago in law school. So that's, that's kind of why I'm
So I pointed it out and some astute counselors did some Googling and found that there are other communities that have these protections. So it's not now, just because somebody in Maryland has the right, doesn't necessarily mean that Vermont law being a Dillon's rule state as opposed to home rule states and blah, 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 blah. So the answer is probably maybe if you ask an attorney, but I'm sure David Rue would probably have a nice, long comment on it. But I can see, I'll talk to um Bill, the city manager, we're trying to really be careful on spending money, especially on our legal fees. Um, but we can see, um, as we, as you point out, I think there's a certain level of risk that we're looking at from an, from an appeal. I think we've always and I pointed this out to them as well. I put this in a box in two thousand seventeen when we had gone to public hearing. I didn't like this rule. Others on the complaining commission did. So we kind of conveniently parked it in a location where its use would show up less often in um, major site plan. So only certain projects of certain scales are going to hit this. So that was kind of a little bit, if we, if it only shows up very infrequently, we'll save ourselves some, some heartburn over this. It has shown up a couple of times. And so we've had to address it. But in general, it hasn't shown up. And when it it did show up for um, Ewing Street, which kind of prompted us to go through and say, okay, now, now it's starting to have an impact. So let's have the conversation. We proposed removing it. Everybody kind of knew we had to fix it, but council wasn't ready to remove it. We proposed it again to remove it and um, here we are. So I think take half the bread loaf now and come back to the other half later. I don't know. I'm not, I'm not the voter. I'm the planning director. So but that's, that's kind of how we got to where we are. Uh, but I will see if we can get some kind of legal opinion. But um, I think unfortunately, had the proposal been to put it in, I think we'd be in better shape to go through and say, I don't know if it's legally justified. We should need to get a legal opinion. It's already in. We're trying to get it out. So.
Right. No, understood.
Mike, I think, I think a key question just about the legality of it is how many how how common is it for cities to have an ordinance like this? And then if it is common, then um, that means that there's probably been challenges elsewhere um, in more litigious states like New York or California or something and but my understanding is since it, since it is something that's done like this, it, like, we got it because it was borrowed from somewhere, right? We had a consultant to who took this shading idea from somewhere, right? So
Presumably, I don't know. She may have made it up as she was just working with another community who wanted to do it. I don't know. I don't know where where she got it from.
I recall being told that like it was borrowed from somewhere, but it, but the version that was borrowed is obviously the most extreme restricted version of it possible. Because it couldn't, it couldn't have been any more restricted than what it, than what the current, current one is. Um, so anyways, the fact that it exists and that, and that it's done other places at least tells me that I don't know. Has it, it's, it's stood up somewhere before, but um, so I think that would be a place to look as opposed to like getting into like really old school case law. But, okay, uh, does anybody else have thoughts about this? Um, are we uh, generally in support of um? Um, I'll get you in a second, Carlton and and Brian. Um, are we, like, one question I have for the planning commissioner, are we generally in support of asking or suggesting that a legal opinion be sought? Um, is a question that's kind of up right now. Uh, I think I saw Carlton first, so let's unmute him.
I don't know if it's still up. Hey, everybody. Um, so I'm, I'm just trying to glean some information, uh, or the experience from Northern Power Systems when we were putting wind turbines up and sometimes people, the neighbors would have an issue with the sh- shadowing of the turbine blades. And I, and they were concerned about it causing epilepsy. Um, and I'm, I'm only mentioning that um, because if we build the um, if we present the issue to the public, uh, who may not be um paying attention to it, it will become an issue. Um, and so I just, I just want to put that out there that um, you know, there's, we we can we should, we should really think about uh, not stymying it up in the future, for the future. Uh, because solar technology is rapidly changing um, as we speak, and I would hope this wouldn't become another satellite dish uh, revise in the future. That's all.
Brian?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, um, just watching the council deliberate on this, they and we'll talk about other things. I mean, they, they followed the planning commission's lead on a lot of things, things we unexpectedly followed up and took them and ran with them. The four to six and uh, I mean, we're talking about other and they were talking about, why don't we do all other neighborhoods, get rid of density caps in other neighborhoods, but this one um, seemed like just a bridge too far to totally get rid of it. They wouldn't go along with our recommendation on that. So it seems to me that it I I'll defer to the group on whether we get a legal opinion, but it does seem like a kind of a, there's no way we're going to get rid of it politically. The council's not going to get rid of it. The the feeling around solar is too strong. So this seems like a good compromise to get to keep this all moving. Anybody else? On solar shading?
So how do people feel, uh, just like a straw poll thing? Oh, it looks like Aaron has something. Go ahead, Aaron.
Yeah, thanks. I was just going to say very quickly, I, I didn't mean to put this out here to suggest like a really strong push for it. I don't know what the scope of our retainer is with Dave Rue or anything like that. So if if it, if it is an issue where, you know, the town manager is going to push back on spending those, that kind of money, because we, that's fine. I think I think Brian's right. It's a compromise. I, I'm just cautious by nature when I, this, this just, this, this one piece just seems odd compared to the other things that we've put on the table and the city council deliberated. Um, and so it's all, I've always been a little uncomfortable with it. And I was glad that we had made the recommendation to get rid of it altogether. Um, I'm not trying to make a mountain out of a molehill, but so.
Yeah, that's true. You know, this is, this is one, the one that we lost on last year. And at least we, we, I I saw it as like a ninety percent victory to get it down to like an actual reasonable place. Um, but uh, it's not perfect, for sure. So uh, so Aaron, are you, or do you, do you, are you in favor of us, of us doing a little straw poll to see if we want to suggest that they get a legal opinion? He may need to be unmuted again.
Giving you the thumbs up.
I'll take the thumbs up as the, as in favor of the straw poll. So um, those in favor uh, of asking or suggesting to have a legal opinion done on the litigation risk involved with uh, making this change as opposed to getting rid of the requirement. Say aye or give me a thumbs up. Just just do a thumbs up if you, if you're in favor of a legal opinion.
Aye, for sure.
Carlton, Aaron. Anybody else? Okay.
I just, I feel confused. To be honest, I like what what the value is, but um I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
Okay, um, how about this? How about Mike, if you could add something in the response that we think it's a good idea. Not as a like suggestion or any kind of demand, but just like it, it, it could be, it could be something to think about for your consideration. I think Aaron has something else to say. He may need to be unmuted, Mike.
Why, why do I seem to be the only one to be unmuted every time? I feel like, feel like you're trying to tell me something, Mike.
Don't remute yourself.
I don't want you to, I don't want you to hear my internal commentary. Um, I think maybe another way to sort of short-circuit this is, is if we just have the general vote as to whether or not we approve this change. We make that recommendation that the city council is putting forward. It would sort of short-circuit the need for uh, a, a legal opinion. Um, I mean, I would, I would only suggest getting that opinion if we felt like we weren't comfortable with the change. But if the group generally thinks it's okay. And I, and I readily admit, I think it's a pretty low-risk scenario in terms of, you know, an appeal, but you know, I think if the group's okay with it generally, we don't need to spend the money or time to have the attorney look at it.
We generally end up with a legal opinion once somebody files for an appeal in court.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's, that's when the real work happens anyway, so.
And then if we find out our, our attorney goes back to City Council and goes to and says, you know, I've done my homework on this and my general opinion, if it goes to the judge, we're going to lose because of X, Y, Z, and then we settle out of court. So, or they feel, no, our, our rules are in good shape and and I think we could win this based on these decisions in these other courts and therefore we should go forward and try to win it. So.
Yeah, no, I get that. I get that. And and if the group is comfortable with that approach, which is fine, then.
I'm, I'm comfortable with saying that, you know, we don't oppose the change, but uh, we would just like to note that it could be worthwhile seeking some legal advice about it. And that's just in the long run to save money potentially because defending it or getting a legal opinion when something's filed and doing a settlement, that's all going to be more expensive. And is the policy outcome writ, is it, is it worth the potential expense?
Right.
So, if if you under, if that was coherent enough for you, Mike, to just note for them. Um, looks like we have a member of the public interested in giving some feedback. Uh, that's fine with me. Go ahead and unmute Mike.
Oh, thanks. Uh, hello, everyone. Good evening. Um, I actually accidentally realized that the wave hand icon would come up. Maybe motion centered in a meeting, uh, week ago, and then I forgot about it. So apologies. Um, my name is Brian Jones. I am a member of the public, but I'm also a member of the DRB. Um, and I meant to participate in these meetings a little earlier. And funny story, I went down to City Hall a couple of weeks ago and um, realized that the doors were locked in the front, but open in the back. Anyway, um, I found you all tonight. And uh, I just had a very quick question about the density provision that jumped from four to six. Anyway, um, I found you all tonight, and I just had a very quick question about the density provision that jumped from four to six units. I realize that it's I missed this part of the meeting, but um the first question is, is this something that is still kind of open for discussion when it comes in front of city council again?
Yes.
Yeah, am I saying yes? Okay, great. Um, yeah, so as I was looking at this in detail, I just kind of had a few questions and and um, I'll just try to do them as one offs here. Um, essentially, I I I understand the need for housing, um, but it seems like a big jump, and I guess as an architect, I should also say I'm an architect, I'm also on the DRB, also live in town. I'm just wondering if density, this issue can can or was discussed with some illustrations similar to the other diagrams that we see in the zoning code? You know, things like floor area ratio and and whatnot. Um, and I also want to make it clear that I don't I'm not trying to propose that there should be more diagrams. I I uh, it's not just, it's not the way zoning works. Um, it would be it'd be too dense to have a diagram for everything. Um, but the reason I mention it is because it seems like a big increase to me. And the second point, which is more of a a point than a question, is I just think maybe it's harder to go from six back to four than it is to just try four for a while and say, hey, this is a pretty darn big increase in density. Let's see what happens as a result of that. And then if be because again, my my overarching concern is just simply that as citizens, neighbors, um, et cetera, you folks don't really know what's coming. You know, and that's why I asked if it's been studied with diagrams. Um, and so then that kind of brings me to my third point, which is really just a question, which is um, is it possible to illustrate this with diagrams um of some nature and then to try to again, see what an increase to four units minimum of any lot. Uh, people who have discussed this at length realize this is residential fifteen hundred as well as residential three thousand, which is already a lot of times a quarter acre lot. Um, would it be worth just kind of taking it one step at a time, possibly illustrating this um to just try to better communicate it to the public? Um, and I realize that's a little bit, there's a little bit in that question, and I realize you all already discussed this, so forgive me for not being able to participate earlier. The only reason I mentioned this is because I I I realize that we need to see a certain increase in density in town. Um, I think that could take a lot of different shapes. Um, and but trying to steer away from the hypotheticals of of what that means. I just recently studied, um, and and Mike, I'm not, I'm speaking to everyone, but I'm gonna speak to you on this point specifically. Um, I recently studied um, a a a a development um pretty close to um, pretty close to my own neighborhood. And I was thinking, wow, maybe three units. This is feasible. This brings in a good amount of people. There's a good pro forma here. Wow, four units, that'd really help, right? Um, to imagine that same development with six units. It's only an apartment building, you know, um, it's nothing else. Um, so anyway, um, I don't want to get too much into the the what ifs. Uh, I just think that it may be um a little bit too much of an increase from from where we are, uh, and I think that some illustrations would help folks understand, hey, what does that house next to me that wants to add an apartment and an ADU? Uh, sorry, here we go. Add an apartment and ADU look like, and they already have a current unit? Well, that's three right there. So, you know, what's that gonna look like with three more units? Anyway, uh.
Yeah, uh, so Brian, I'd like to, um, you know, representing the like policy talk is, you know, whereas Mike is the technical person.
Oh, sorry.
I'll catch you up on the, I'll catch you up on the like the policy place we're coming from, and we've been coming from uh for a while now, the planning commission uh, in looking at these things. And so overall, um, I think it's fair to say that our, more or less, our consensus here is that for for planning in general, moving away from density and using density as all as a way to regulate things is not a great idea. And uh, we think especially it's not a great idea for an urban center like Montpelier where um the overall uh policy goals for the region are to kind of concentrate development and so that so that other places are not developed, so that we don't have sprawl, so that we don't have, you know, other negative outcomes. Um, you know, um, forest fragmentation, et cetera. Uh, and then the economic and the community and all the like goals we have all like line up with that. Um, so we'd like to, we'd like to move away from just using density at all, and we'd like to use what Mike sometimes calls a form-based code, which is just regulating how things look and using our design review, using the, you know, all of the things that we have in place for determining how things look without without trying to regulate the amount of units in a place. And sometimes there's gonna be scenarios, I'm sure, like some of the things that you were mentioning where six units is not gonna be probably possible on every parcel. You know, even though, even though it's it's allowed, but because of just the practicality of uh, you know, the uh, the limitations on setbacks and the limitations on height and and things like that.
Sorry, Kirby, I'm doing this again, but I'm off camera, so.
Yeah, no, no, you're you're good.
I I appreciate your explanation, and I I don't want to waste anyone's time tonight. That's not um, not at all my goal. Um, I'm aware of the these other factors that you're mentioning, and and I just wanted to acknowledge that, so um, so you knew uh that I was thinking about this thing from from kind of multiple sides. Uh again, not to be too specific, not to use one case study as an example, uh, but the reason I mention it is because I think it's difficult sometimes to put policies in place and everything seems abstract, and there's not even an illustration or some kind of study which has been done to say this is what could be, and that's why I brought up this example. It just so happens that with a floor area ratio of one hundred or one, rather, um, on a quarter acre lot, you can have ten thousand square feet of of built space over three to four floors. Um, if you were to look around anywhere, and I'm sorry, and by the way, that um, even with three large size units, that only equals approximately half of the floor area ratio. So I want to just address a couple of things you said really quickly and then move on, because again, my my um time here is not to slow anybody down, but kind of catch up uh, and 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 share a little bit of what I see is happening. The this notion that pro density should happen downtown, I'm a hundred percent with you on that. I think we already have a high, um, we have no density regulations on the downtown district, right? There was another project I was looking at with some folks a couple of years ago. It was an existing brick building. Somebody probably knows who purchased it a couple of years ago. We were thinking, hey, what about seven condos in this building? It's feasible. They wouldn't have been too small. Maybe it would have worked. No den, no density regulation there. Um, so I realize there are already zones in town that have density re- that do not have density requirements, and I realize that taking it out may seem like an easy way to um make things, simplify things, but 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 I'm not sure that's how it's gonna work out. And I just want to point out that coming from Philadelphia, ten years of professional work uh in the city, uh, they have density regulations as well, and they're an urban environment. Um, they also have other regulations that have to do with individuals who are or not related to each other, living in close proximity. I am, I'm pro development. I have a meeting with Downstreet next week to talk with the, to talk with folks about some projects um that are coming online. Uh again, the only way that I felt like I could make this tangible to to you all uh as a concept, and also to folks in town, right, neighbors and other people who don't always know what's going on when it's when it's happening is just to simply illustrate something, and that's why I brought up this example of this very typical quarter acre lot, single family house, you know, in a neighborhood with primarily single family houses. And four units, maybe it's gonna be condos, and I, you know, my concern is not that we shouldn't have diversity in housing, and it's not that we shouldn't have the the ability for for that diversity to cater to multiple groups of folks, you know, smaller apartments that are more affordable. But there's also continuity in zoning and also in town planning, right? And this is an important thing. You have neighborhoods that have uh, families or families with uh, an apartment or even families with an apartment and their in-laws living there, right? Um, and and these are what we, this is what we typically see in town in a lot of our residential neighborhoods. This is the fabric of Montpelier right now, and albeit I agree that there's a lot of potential for um, increasing it and improving stuff downtown and creating higher density. It just doesn't seem like it's a good blanket um solution for all zoning districts and 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 um and I and uh getting back to my first point and and which is really a question. Wouldn't it be a good idea to illustrate some of this and have it as part of a report, even if only to to communicate internally within these government and these volunteer organizations at work, because admittedly, um it can be very difficult to to see uh what what change this is going to mean, and I and I I, you know, it's it's.
I can tell you, I can tell you one thing, Brian, that we, the easiest change that we foresee is is and it's and it gets at one of the biggest problems we have in Montpelier and in Vermont, and that is having one or two people in an enormous house. And making it, making it possible to renovate those uh, the housing stock we have to have a lot more units in it. You know, that's that's the low hanging fruit. That's the easy thing, and that, but that's also something that density can get in the way of. Um, so so that's the kind of stuff that we're expecting to happen. Uh, new buildings uh in like more rural areas of the city that have six units, I think that's less likely, just economically and otherwise, that there should be major new construction stuff. I think it's gonna be a mostly renovation stuff is what we expect to see. And we've, we've had land like potential developers and landlords tell us that 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 they were interested in properties near the downtown area, and they did not do the project because they were limited to four units, when if they would have been able to do six, they would have done it. So so, you know, that's that's really what we're expecting to happen. Um, but Maria also had her hand up, so I want to give her a chance.
Thanks, Kirby.
Yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to say that um point out that I live in on a street that for some reason, Brian or Mike, you might understand why, but a lot of these homes used to be single family homes, but they've been split up into six plus units. Um, I live in a single family home, but next to me, there's a building that has at least six units, and then on the other side, it might even be eight units. Um, we're on East State Street. And from the exterior, I mean, I've looked at historical photos of my block, and the the buildings are exactly the same as when they were single family homes. Like, they're still beautiful Victorians. Um but now we have this whole neighborhood, and it's you know, these units are filled with lovely people. You know, we're a neighborhood, we're not like, I don't know. I I guess they're apartment buildings, but they're full of people that love living here and are happy to live here and happy to have somewhere close to town that they can walk to. Um so I I just don't see, I don't, I personally don't see the concern with jumping to six rather than four or even two. I mean, it's still Montpelier, it's still good people, you know, and you're giving people a place to live. So I just wanted to point that out, that this already exists on a quarter acre, quarter acre lot, and it's a perfectly nice neighborhood.
Yeah, um, thanks. I I just had one last comment, um, partially to uh reply to that. Thanks very much for for that. Um, yeah, I don't want to come across with any of these concerns as seeming kind of like uh, anti-density or something. I I lived in Philadelphia for ten years. Uh, I I get it, and uh, wa- being able to walk or bike downtown is is really um, one of the main um, kind of amenities, right, or uh, or positives of being able to live in this town and and kind of keep the urban fabric alive. Eyes on the street, et cetera. There are many, many, many benefits. Um chopping up existing buildings that are large is absolutely um, I absolutely understand that. My father was a landlord and builder and developer for many years, and there were a lot of projects where you get a big house, and there would be four, maybe even five units, sometimes fewer, but I I I get it. Um i- it's the other developments that I don't think um maybe folks have really modeled, and that's why I keep talking about these diagrams and you know, uh, again, floor area ratio of one, ten thousand square feet of buildable space, uh, excuse me, um allowable coverage in our in our E S three thousand sixty percent. Typical development with a lot of parking spaces and three units of some nature or a good sized house, and then even an accessory dwelling unit. It's about twenty percent. Twenty percent. So it's just one of these things, uh, folks, that from a development and planning side, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't propose to know exactly where we're going or what the solution is. Uh, my concern and and really my ask is simply saying, should we take this one step at a time? And I realize you all have been working on this a lot, so I don't want to come across as suggesting that um, that I know better, but as a citizen and as an architect, these are the things that, um, and I've read through all of these proposed changes too, by the way. Um, I've been on the DRB now for about a year. And um, it's it's been a great experience to to meet folks and and understand what's going on in town and acclimate um to the zoning code. Um, I think it might be uh might be too much too soon, but I do hear you, Kirby, when you say, hey, we've talked with developers, and we've got these large Victorian houses, and they want to chop them up. Um, it may be an apples and oranges thing, and I don't know if we can quite see that yet, where it's like chopping a building up that's already there is different um, than allowing somebody to build something new or add to a site um and put in six new parking spaces plus six new units or five new units, get to a anywhere between a forty fifty percent. Um, you know, it's just, it's a lot, and frankly, I realize there's not a lot going on in town from a development standpoint. Uh, as an architect, that's also very clear to me. Um, and I realize that Vermont has a housing shortage problem. And this is something that needs to be addressed. Um, Montpelier also has a tax um revenue problem. Um, and so let me think about development. I think we also have to keep in mind scenarios for generating tax revenue, um, which is something that I'm not really prepared to expand upon. I just wanted to point out that from where we are now to one to two units accessory dwelling unit, you know, even even the incentives that Downstreet was offering to provide middle-class folks the opportunity to get some income generating revenue, increased housing. I'm all for it. I think it's a very positive policy. Four is a big jump already. Six, we'll see. That's, I mean, I I think I've I I've expressed my concerns and and frankly, um it may just be an opportunity to to look at larger changes like this and say, these are the, this is the way we're gonna move these forward in the future. And maybe larger changes, even solar is another good one, where the diagrams are incredibly helpful. But for folks to be able to see that visually, what does this actually mean for my lot? Um, effect that I'm giving, putting on my neighbor, and effect that my neighbor might be putting on me, it's incredibly helpful. So when the proposed changes happen, my only feedback is, let's add some visuals to this to really make it easy for folks to see what what these policy changes uh mean, you know? Um, so thank you all for listening and apologies for uh you know, kind of um, just talking a little bit more than I intended to tonight. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, we we appreciate it. We appreciate you very much. We also appreciate the DRB very much, because for one thing, uh, in a lot of towns, the planning board would be the DRB and planning mission combined, so we're just really thankful. We don't have to do all the adjudicating stuff you have to do, so thank you for your service.
Yeah, sure.
I also wish I, it's I, you you mentioned Philadelphia, and I just, I'm just gonna take a second to talk about that. Uh, so I I work at the state house, and I was talking to some colleagues there who are like fiscal analysts about Fishtown recently, because there's you know, uh, big success, Fishtown's this, you know, really successful redevelopment area in Philadelphia where a whole lot of um houses were were redone and and ended up gaining. Yeah, uh, we were just talking about how we wish Vermont had something like that. But it's unfortunately, it's just, it is really different than the reality of a place like Philadelphia. Like, we're just almost the opposite, where we just have these old Victorians and things. We have, our housing stock just has not we don't have much of it. And and so um, when you talk about the potential of people building new things, we're not seeing it. It doesn't seem fiscally possible. There's construction costs are so high, so. So like you were concerned about people throwing up six unit lots on, or on small lots, but we actually.
I agree. There aren't a lot of vacant lots in town, period, you know, and I agree with you, the construction is high. So it may be an outlier kind of thing that happens, but I still see the possibility for it. And the only reason that I had these insights that I had is because it just so happened at time up that I was working on a project where you know, this would have been very possible, just like that. Right? Just, I mean, just snap the fingers and, you know, there's, there could be a giant six unit building, uh, but hey.
Yeah, that's, that's not our, that's not our reality, unfortunately. We don't, we don't have a lot of developers. We don't have a lot of people throwing a lot of money into, to new developments from what we've seen. You, you said you were gonna talk to Downstreet. It's like Downstreet's one of the only entities that are actually actively doing stuff, but that's because they're getting, you know, grants and they're getting the, the money to put into it. We're not seeing like middle income people get, you know, have developers build for them. Um, so that's, that is, that, that's very relevant to this whole conversation is that, that we, we, we want to see um, new construction type stuff like uh, but we're just, we're just not seeing it. And, and we're not, I mean, I'm not personally convinced that this, making this change about density is gonna make that happen at all. Just because it's feasible, like, like, just because it's like, like, you know, something that can be done doesn't mean that it will be done. That's why it's, it's more likely just because it's the mon- the money makes sense for renovation, but I, I don't think the money even makes sense for new construction, unfortunately. And in, in Montpelier has a lot, we, we have a lot of obstacles in the way zoning and otherwise, so that's part of our job here too, is to, to try to reduce those costs as well, but we, we have a lot of work to do for that.
Yeah, well, I, I, I hear you and uh, I'm, I'm sure you all have already thought about this. This is really the only um, piece that I haven't talked about, which is, yeah, I mean, I think everybody's excited for there to be more population in town. I think when you take a building that's a certain size and you divide it up into six units instead of four, um, you just get six units that are less valuable than the four, right? So, um, you, we're gonna get an increase in population, for sure, you know? Um, and I think uh, that, that could, that could mean a lot of different things, but um, uh, look, folks, I appreciate you, you listening to me tonight. Um, I don't have a crystal ball and I actually don't have any uh, any political agenda at all. I'm just a, a guy with a kid uh, who's about to go to school and, and I think if, if uh, um, I, I love Montpelier and that's why my wife and I moved back. So uh, happy to be participating in local government and happy to be uh, meeting you all tonight and uh, appreciate your time and also your, your service. So I look forward to seeing you around and frankly, in, in person, I, I'm gonna let you all go, but is there any uh, notion of having um, meetings in uh, City Hall again? Um, I was at a city council meeting a week ago and that was disparate uh, public population at best. I think I was about one of three people that were in the room. Anyway, uh, Mike's shaking his head no.
No, I'll, I, I can jump in on that one and say, we, we're not expecting it. We don't usually get a lot and we actually get better participation by doing remote only meetings, so.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I know Carlton's trying to jump in here, so.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Looks like he needs to unmute.
Nope.
Hello, Brian. You are an amazing human being for being on that, uh, doing your role over there. Um, I am also from the Philadelphia region. Uh, my father owned um, a block around Powton Village. Uh, and the art museum. Um, it doesn't work like that here. Um, I've lived here for twenty-one years. Uh, what you're stating, I appreciate it. I represent the other side of things where um, I'm looking for the density. Um, I'm also looking to alleviate the competition of um, the lack of housing uh, that the uh, landlords are able to uh, establish. Um, we're turning this uh, community into um, a community that is, really loves the service industry and but the service industry can afford to live here. Um, and what you're asking is doing more of the same of what's going on and that's hiring more consultants to come up with um, paperwork or um, you know, paid to convince the, the public when we really all need to just sit down and have a conversation together in a colossal inclusion, uh, inclusive uh, manner, uh, because uh, there's a lot of decisions and a lot of discussions like you're having uh, coming from a perch uh, that is not hearing a lot of people uh, that are more boots on the ground uh, than uh, represented here today.
Okay, um, Carlton, thank you for that. I uh, I checked your stuff out and uh, I'm really interested in having a conversation with you in the future. I think we have a lot of shared values, but um, the whole point of, of this, I think really uh, could be distilled into my idea of participatory democracy is one where there's, it's easier for folks to access what's happening around them. And as an architect, you're always working through ideas by drawing things because, and there's a famous uh, quote in architecture, why would we talk about things when we can just draw them? They don't lie. Drawings do not lie. Uh, and so I don't think anyone here is lying. I just think that some uh, um, some more diagrams, some additional diagrams for some of the uh, more important parts of the zoning code are positive, both when bigger changes happen and then also to kind of keep them in the code to make it, you know, easy for average, everyday folks to wrap their minds around.
If we can get a pro bono, I'm good, you know? We don't have both ways. We can't.
Oh, okay. Well, Kirby.
We can't ask for a lawyer to check out things and then also then, you know, uh, or we can't have enough, we don't have enough lawyer, but then we, we create these um, you know, convincing reports that may or may not fly because and I understand what you're saying. There's plenty of information that shows uh, documentation on a, a variety of things and it's very difficult to access uh, with a lot of different bumper stops. Um, the, the transparency, the ultra transparency is probably what we need to work on more than anything you're talking about right now.
Yeah. All right. Well, I realize that this is branching off into all sorts of stuff, but I just want to say um, to all of you, thank you very much. Uh, it, it's um, I feel like I've been able to express my thoughts and uh, that's not always the case with these meetings, uh, uh, as I know, because I'm usually on the other side of things. So thank you all for listening and uh, I look forward to meeting you in, in person. We can talk more about uh, town and our volunteer service and, you know, how to, how to um, bring Montpelier alive, uh, to borrow from the, from the uh, from the group in town doing a bunch of work. So, thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks for coming in. Uh, you're welcome anytime. Appreciate you.
Yeah, thanks. I'll try to keep it uh, keep the verbiage down next time, but thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Yeah, thanks for your thoughts. Uh, so while we're talking about it, we, we haven't actually discussed the uh, um, the change from four to six and the conforming and unconform, or conforming to anything um, changed. So, so why don't we, why don't we tackle that? Uh, do people have thoughts that haven't been said about that change other than, I mean, I'll start off again with my opinion on it and I feel like city council responded like lightning struck for some reason for us. And I think that this is an opportunity that put us a few years ahead. Um, and so I'm, I'm excited that, that there's interest there. Uh, go ahead, Maria.
Um, I was just gonna echo that. I think it's, well, again, like I just said, I live between many buildings that have many units and I think it's wonderful, you know? Um, if people just desperately need a place to live in town and we don't want them moving, you know, to somewhere far out in Calis and then driving here every day. It's just, if they want to be in town, we should find ways to help people live in town. Um, and I don't know. I mean, maybe there's, I don't know. See, I even say like a risk. Like, I don't even know that it, I would be opposed to more construction, you know, outside of like the downtown area, you know, like I think this is where we want people to live. Um, this is where we want people. All, every kind of person, you know, so I, I agree. And I think there are, there are so many other uh, regulations in place, you know, between like demolition requirements and all of the different reviews that buildings need to go under for permitting. I think there is so much in place that was still probably um, stamped down, a lot of development that, that other people are afraid of. Um, so I think there's still a lot of those kinds of protections in place. But yeah, I am all for increasing, increasing it to six, even though we had only voted on four, so that's my input.
It's also, it's also, if I may, um, it, uh, the elephant in the room for me is I, I gleaned a lot of information um, campaigning, um, and a number of people came to me and discussed, younger people, uh, discussed that, um, you know, they, after they leave their parents' house a- and, and want to go to college, they can't afford to, to, to move here. They, they, they can't live here. Um, even high schoolers who approached me and said, I can't vote yet, but if I would, if I were able to vote, I see the future. Um, we're stating how, you know, there, there's a, there's a unsaid that's going on where parents, I don't have any children and I'm old. Um, I turned fifty last Saturday. Um, and so it's, I'm not that old, but you know what I'm saying? Um, there's a, there's a consensus amongst young people when they're, when they trust an older person to state that, that, you know, their parents or grandparents are really psyched that they're going to study abroad. However, the unsaid is it's cheaper to study abroad than it is to be here in Montpelier and studying here. And one of the high schoolers suggested that I may use the idea of it's cheaper to live in Montpelier, France and go to school than Montpelier, Vermont and go to school, live and go to school. And so that's, that's the issue bubbling from younger than us. This is not about us. This is not about our concerns. It's about the future. It's, it, we need more housing. It's the, the population as a whole is growing and um, you know, to cinch the belt um, because it's stymying tradition, um, is not future focused. So I say eight, ten, however many we need, because we really, it, it's, it's long overdue.
Thank you, Carlton. Uh, Brian? If you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, um, I was just gonna say, so just watching it unfold at the council, we were all, you guys had prepared me that we had to be really incremental and tread lightly because of politics, which I think was probably good counsel based on the experience you guys have had, but and we brought it up to four because that's consistent with the state law that just passed, right? So, and then spurred on by citizens chiming in at the council session and the council members themselves, they said, you know, let's be a little more bold. And many people have mentioned the big changes that went, zone changes that happened in twenty eighteen and that there hasn't been, I, I think it was Nathan or someone else at the council saying, well, it really hasn't been much development since those big changes. Yeah, there were changes. There are some changes for the good and there's some real positives, but we're just gonna have to be more bold, just be bolder and less incremental with it. So I, I'm on, I'm, and I, I don't want to gift horse in the mouth. If the council politically is ready to go to six, let's, let's go. I'm with it.
Honestly, I think it's incremental too, though. I mean, the six things incremental. I think, I think the, the long run is the, is to not have density requirements so that we can focus our zoning attention on specific things that, that really matter like design review and, you know, other things like that, things that people do care about and, and um, you know, not, not just limiting the amount of people who can live here, uh, which is what density is the entire point of density. Um, so it's still incremental, I think. I think six is, uh, I think four would have maybe caused some projects maybe to happen that wouldn't have. It would have just been a handful, maybe less, and I think six is gonna be maybe a handful more and still not gonna be any kind of silver bullet. Um, it's just, like Nathan said, like everyone has, who's been around here looking at the state of things for a while knows, we were way behind. The catching up we did when we redid the zoning when I first joined was um, basically making it so that the town as it exists was legal. But not even, not even a hundred percent. It was up to ninety percent. We brought everything up to ninety percent. I mean, that meant that the zoning that we were starting from before that was so anti-development that it made the town as it exists illegal. Um, so, and, and we still only brought up to ninety percent, like when we, when we did all those changes. So we still made ten percent of our beautiful neighborhoods that everyone loves, like the meadows and stuff, like a lot of that, a lot of those houses that everyone loves and cherishes is still non-conforming. As in, we don't, you know, according to our zoning, we don't want that, which we obviously do. So, anyway, lot, lot farther to go. Um, so.
Thank you, Kirby, for saying that.
Six isn't a huge step really, considering how far behind we are and how long Montpelier's spent decades. Um, being pretty anti-development. Um, and it's why we have a crisis, obviously. The crisis didn't happen overnight. It happened after decades of preventing housing. Um, so anyways, I'll go off that soapbox. Uh, everyone's good with three. Everyone's good with the three and everyone's good with that change. Are there any other uh, of these changes that people would like to discuss then, before we go to a vote? It is seven, so I'll, I'll start moving things along for, for us. Anybody have anything else? Everyone's good with the um, Mike did prepare the memo. We didn't formally go through it. He sent it to us, though. That's gonna be part of our response back. So.
There's a legal, there's a legal requirement. You have to do a required report. Planner busy work. It's a big BS form, but I won't get on my soapbox because you don't need to listen to me. Um, but uh, yeah, we're required to do this very specifically written out report and so when this comes back, we've got to amend the required report. So I amended the required report. I believe I highlighted the section that I changed. But there isn't too much that had to technically change, but officially, you'll have to say, these are okay, and here's the amended required report.
Um, so, so is everyone good with that, with the report, with the uh, the caveat being Mike um, with, with the wanted, with the one, you know, note about shading that we'd like to pass on? Um, so.
Yep. PC thinks it's a good idea to get a legal opinion on solar shading provisions.
That sounds great. So is, uh, do we have a motion to approve uh, the report with that one amendment? Okay. Motion from Brian? Uh, do we have a second?
Yeah, at least get us on my screen here.
Uh, Aaron's got a thumbs up, so we'll, we'll uh, so a motion from Brian and a second from Aaron. Uh, does anyone want to discuss the report or the changes before we vote?
Um, can I just, can I ask, when it states uh, in materials, uh, who determines the high quality? In the section of material.
Specifically what?
So it's uh, so let me, let me bring it up for you. Um, let's see here, within, within the document of, let's see, I do have it here. It is, here it is. All right. Well, this is you. Uh, can you go to materials?
Um, is it in this document here?
It would be, yes. Uh, no.
Okay. No.
It's, it's, it's in the larger document, the hundred and seventy-one page document. Are we reviewing that at all?
Oh, you mean the, the full zoning bylaw?
Yeah. Do we have anything to do with this or?
Oh, I mean, I can. I can pull that one up.
Just the entire bylaws, okay.
I'm just looking for the materials aspect of it. Um, when it, when it states, it, it, it's, it's very specific about different things. Um, and I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm trying to understand who determines the high quality in the verbiage. Um, because, you know, that, that's subject to opinion.
Just give me one moment.
Okay.
If you've got a, uh, either a section reference or a page reference, then.
Let me bring it here. Okay. So it would be, oh, I have a question about those signs too. Um, let me bring it. Just one moment. It's the material section. Sorry. I, uh,
That's a big document.
A big document. Oh wait, I'm going the wrong way. I gotta go to 171. It's page 171. Hold on a second. There it is. Okay. So I have a note, actually. No, 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 you messed me up.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. It's all right. Um, so first, I'm, okay. So there's, there's in part three, I have a number of things circled. Uh, in part three, um, of, and so that starts at 132 of 220, uh, 212, um, under five, uh, section five, it says, under waivers, uh, the development, uh, development review board may waive the amount and placement standards where an applicant demonstrates that the, that way, uh, the waiver request creates the minimum variance uh, from the standard and e, and either, and I'm, I'm looking at, um, B. I'm not sure if you're there yet because I'm kind of in the wilderness as far as.
What, what was the section number again?
It was section number, uh, you want the part or you want the section? Cause this is, I, I, I don't see a word as section. I see.
Either the section or the page. It, there'll be a page three dash 14 or something like that, or a section number.
I see. Okay. I'm looking at it more from my, um, okay. So it's section three dash six, three.
I'm blinding everybody as I go spinning through here. 61, 62 and 63. So I'm in chapter three, 20 site plan standards.
So is that page 132 for you?
Uh, 141.
No, I'm, so I'm, I'm in.
There should be like a section number on the left side.
And it's three dash two.
What are the numbers on the left side, Carlton? Is there, is it like a three, one, two, four, or is it like, like a four digit number on the left side?
Three, two, oh, three.
Okay. Yeah, that'll get us there.
Okay, cool.
All right. Three, two, oh, three landscape and screening requirements.
Right. So as far as, um, okay. I have a number of things in this section. Okay. So the building, one is this, the building mount equipment, um, when, when it says the wall, uh, the wall mount equipment, and first of all, let me, let me ask before I even go into this. Do we have any type of say in this?
Oh yeah. You guys officially write this. I mean, technically I wrote it and the consultant wrote it and you guys reviewed it and approved it, or a previous version of you guys did.
Yeah, I was gonna say I have nothing to do with this. Okay. Um, the, I, I'm, I'm so, uh, so the future is so important and, uh, some of this wording for me, given that I'm always looking for, um, creative ways of development, uh, that will cut costs, uh, also be sourced locally, uh, to, to save on transportation. The rooftop equipment, uh, utilities shall be enclosed or screened by the building's walls or the parabits that, parapets, uh, that shall be compatible with the form, design and materials of the building. So walking around Montpelier and, and kind of trying to find this example, it, 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 does this require, air conditioners or HVAC equipment? Is this what, is this talking about that aspect of things? I'm, I'm not sure. The building mount equipment. What is that? Is that the utilities? Is it the solar panels as well?
Uh, no, it wouldn't apply to this, to the solar panels. Uh, it apply, it would have, those have special, special rules. It applies to most of those HVAC systems. So usually if it's a roof mounted piece of equipment, usually what'll end up happening is it ends up getting, um, set in a little bit to the center of the building. So it can't be viewed or you end up extending the walls of the parapet at the top. So the roof is slightly below, so that way it helps to, to screen rooftop, uh, equipment. Uh, and then the wall mounted, usually especially these, these get approved all the time, even in design review. So usually you're trying to locate them around the corner. You're going to put them in, um, uh, colors that, you know, we don't want somebody going putting in a, you know, a compressor for a district heat sit, or for a, um, or a air source heat system to go and have them fluorescent yellow or something like that. Um, you know, we're going to want them to be colored and muted and put into a location where they're less visible, uh, those types of, those types of requirements. Put them on the side of the building or on the back of the building, not on the front of the building.
Okay. All right. Let, uh, I, I just want to touch on a couple of them because this is a, this is a large document. Um, just some things that I just circled that caught my eye. And now regarding the, the, uh, materials in section three, two, zero, seven, the design and cap, uh, compatibility. And that would be, uh, so the material section number four, uh, when it states, that's my, that was my original reason for coming to this document. It's the use, uh, uh, A is use high quality building materials, use a complimentary palette of materials on all sides of buildings. Have materials change, uh, changes located at interior corners or other logical terminations and not at the exter. So I understand what you're saying as far as some of the equipment, um, but what does that mean as use high quality and who sets that standard as far as, uh, determining the high quality building, uh, materials?
Ah, there we go. High quality building materials, yes.
Um, can I intervene for a second? Uh, we're, we're actually gonna, running out of time. This is a very important vote, so I think we should get the vote done. And then, um, I would suggest like Carlton and Mike doing, like going over this offline, maybe. Is that okay?
Uh, that's up to, up to Carlton. I'm fine to always sit down with any planning commissioner who wants to go over these, these questions here.
Yeah. Is that okay, Carlton? If Mike and you go, and you guys can even take a deeper dive because we're gonna, we're gonna run out of time in like 10 minutes anyway.
Yeah.
And Aaron, did you have something before we finish the vote?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask what agenda item this was relevant to. It's not. So I think it's just not, not happening right now. I'm not saying that it's not important, but it's just we've got to get through the agenda items. So let's focus on that and get the vote done.
Yes, it seems like, it seems like a good thing to, to, to tackle offline and then, and then you'll have more time. Um, okay. So, uh, we're gonna proceed with, we're gonna proceed with the vote. And, uh, did anyone else have any more discussion of the motion? The motion was, um, from Brian with a second from Aaron to approve the report that Mike prepared for us with the addition of a note concerning, uh, solar shading and a legal opinion. Any other discussion of that before we vote?
Is there time?
Huh?
Is there time?
Yeah, there's definitely time to vote if we're good. Um, I was just checking in to see if anybody had any more discussion. So, uh, let's do it. Uh, those in favor of the motion, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Or, or do a wave or a thumbs up, any indication? Um, okay. And you're Ariane. Okay. Uh, and any opposed? Do a frowny face, emote or something. Uh, and then, uh, any abstentions? Do a shrug. I don't know. Okay. Looks like it was unanimous. So we have six people here.
Yep.
Six, zero, zero, Mike. Okay. We've approved the report. Hopefully the city council follows up with all of it. I will probably be at the meeting on Wednesday to monitor so far.
It will be late.
It'll be late.
The patients. Yeah. Uh, so we're, we're on the agenda after council orientation. My, I, I've been doing this for 10 years now. Council orientation usually takes about two hours. So if we're on after, after the eight 30 break, I would be surprised if it's that quick at eight 30. May not be till later, but.
How many new people are there, Mike?
There's just one, but we had a number of new people last year as well. So as Bill likes to point out, the first time you give these guys, you're giving them just a waterfall of information. And then they sit on the council for a year and you give them that same presentation and they're like, oh, I get it now. I get that. I get that now. I get that now. I get that now. That's something I don't even remember from last time. So they, it's, they do it every year just because every year somebody learns something new that was in the last presentation, but.
Um, I did not actually follow up to learn, uh, who won the, it was district one, right? Who won the district one seat?
Adrian Gill, uh, replaces, uh, Donna Bate. So Donna was the most senior member of the council. But, uh, but I do believe, um, there were two people who were new last year, um, Tim Heaney and, actually maybe been three new people last year. So there are a couple of folks that are getting their second orientation and one person getting their first orientation.
Hmm. Okay. All right. Does anybody have anything else? Um, I think we'll just save the, the minutes. And go ahead and adjourn unless we have anything else before. Okay. All right. Thanks, everyone. I'm gonna adjourn without a vote. Have a good night.
Thank you all.